And welcome to the March 28, 2013 Longview City Council Meeting. Tonight, we're going to start with our prayer and pledge, which will be led by Senior Pastor Chuck Warnock of New Covenant Church. Would you please stand?
Let's pray together. God, we thank you for the chance to participate in democracy, in a great country, in a great city. We ask you, Lord, to bless this city. We ask you to bless your people, and we ask you to bless the businesses in this city, God. We look to you, and we pray, God, during this Easter season especially, that people will look to you, especially those who have not been looking to you in our city. Lord, we ask you to bless tonight, bless the deliberations of this council as they consider the issues before them. Give them wisdom and humility, Lord, to hear and decide the best course. We look to you in all these areas, and we thank you in advance in the great name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Good to see you, too. Citizen comment items. Brandon Johnson. He got his Easter shirt, too.
Is that what it is?
Uh huh. Easter egg colors.
Well, greetings to you, Mayor.
Greetings to you.
City Council, City Manager, Shelley, Jim, staff, TV land.
You miss Mary Ann?
Staff? Because she's some superstaff. I come to you this evening giving you congratulations. I know many of you often get complaints. Sometimes I bring them, not all the time. But I want to congratulate you on some of the efforts that you have spearheaded. They could have been spearheaded by someone else, but a few of you on the council chose to look at some things, and I'm seeing them coming to fruition. One of them is your action item today, beginning to look at the hotel issue for the convention center. Hooray. Anywhere in Longview, but especially in the district that I reside. I have friends and neighbors who would love to have a job where they can almost walk to a place to work. I also want to give kudos to you all for the trail over at Benny Jackson. I didn't see, I saw Casher and Richard there, and the people in District 3, thank you. Even though the trail is for everyone in Longview, we thank you for that publicly. And there are some other efforts with the I-20 Corridor Task Force that you started, Mayor. We thank you for that, and we look forward, as a citizen, to seeing more of these things. For some reason, all of a sudden, I'm really feeling more and more involved in the community, and it's because some of you have taken what we have voiced as citizens, heard it, and are now implementing it. So I just want to say thank you, thank you to your staff. I hope you give them a raise. City manager, no, city manager, no, city manager. And so, we just appreciate you. So you guys have a great rest of the meeting. I'm going to sit down.
All right, happy Easter to you, Brandon.
David Mays.
Mayor Dean and Councilwoman Williams, and Councilman Sam Smith, Frost, Manley, and Allen, I come before you today to share with you something I feel is important. Now, I have to admit that I don't watch all your council meetings. I do watch some of them. And so I have this to say to you. Whereas each one of you has within you an awesome power and responsibility, when each of you speaks, you speak with the voice of over 10,000 souls, each with a different need, desire, and hope for their lives in the life of Longview. When you pray, you pray with a spirit representing Muslim, Jewish, Hindu, Christian, and many others contained within our city. You are not here to make everybody happy. Sometimes, you're not here to make anybody happy. You are here to represent people to the best of your ability. And whereas you come together to be a voice, heart, and mind of over 80,000 people trying to find a way to get along and improve humanity, then of course you consider all the people like me that lives just outside the city limit, but spend the majority of our time within your bounds, and our money stays here. Your thoughts, discussion, and decisions affect many more times than just 80. And whereas I ponder and reflect on things I did and must do in my life, and I have to make decisions I don't like, you also ponder and reflect before you decide things that affect the people. Hopefully, most of the time, you will not always agree. There needs to be a voice of accountability, a voice of concern, a voice of pause. Individually, you may have to make decisions you don't like, but it's important to the people. You may not get what you want because it's not what's good for the people. And whereas if you have a mind and heart of the people, all decisions are the correct decision. And if you don't have the mind and heart of the people, it doesn't matter what you decide because it's wrong. In the words of Councilman Allen on Valentine's Day, he said, "It's a pleasure to be part of an organization or a board like this where we can have a fairly tense conversation about an important issue, where we can agree to disagree without being disagreed."
Excuse me, Mr. Mays, excuse me. That was Mr. Manley said that.
I'm sorry. Mr. Manley. Well, I just wrote down the wrong name. I apologize.
That's okay. Continue.
Please, please forgive my error.
I just wanted, for the record, to make sure that we...
Not only am I deaf, but I can't see very well, so... All voices should be heard. Therefore, know that I, as one, support you, encourage you to be bold and walk confidently. You're a good group, and I believe that God, by whatever name you refer to God, looks upon your meeting, smiles, and says, "It is good." Thank you for your time, especially today, on a day that is so important to several faith groups, of which many, maybe all of you are a part. It is the day that a few gathered in a room heard a new way of life and forever changed the world. You also may change the world today. Thank you for your time, your service, and your attention.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Vic Verma. Now, Vic, you're the one that got the hard act to follow.
No complaints, Vic.
Come on, Vic.
No complaints?
What we got today, Vic?
I can't have any...
That's right, Vic.
Okay. I'll remember that. Thank you, Richard. Mayor Dean, members of council, once again, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I know on your agenda tonight, you have the Hotel Conference Center as an agenda item, and as a member and a leader with the American Society of Civil Engineers, one of the things I've been involved with... Okay. Can you hear me now? Is that all right? Okay. As a member and a leader with the American Society of Civil Engineers, we in the past have, we have statewide conferences typically twice a year. The last one we had in Longview was way back in 1998, actually, 1999. We brought our state conference back to East Texas to Tyler in 2007. And as the way we did it was, we have a hotel and a conference center, but they're pretty far apart. And we would have, and right now, we would have the same issues in Longview. And typically, when I go to this conference, we have our conference in a hotel that's big enough to host it, and that works out really well. So with that in mind, I want to express my strong support for the Hotel Conference Center concept. I think we would, we as a society, would look very strongly at bringing a conference to Longview under those circumstances.
Is that, is that a contract?
It's not a contract, but it is a...
Hey, we got, we got to sign the paper now.
But it would definitely help our decision making.
We appreciate that, Vic. Thanks a lot, man.
Thank you.
We're working on it fast and furious.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I have no other speaker cards. Presentation item of the fiscal year 2011-2012, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, Henry &amp; Peters. We talk about comprehensive, what are we talking about?
It is comprehensive.
Are we going through this whole book tonight?
No, we are not.
Good.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, council. I'm Rodney Overman. I'm a partner in the CPA firm of Henry &amp; Peters here in our Longview office. With me tonight is Adrian Deason, is a senior manager in the audit side of our firm as well. Obviously, we've performed this audit in the past for a number of years, rotated off in our back again. We appreciate the opportunity to be of service. You've got several things in front of you. Where I would like to start, and before I go any further, I should also thank David Willard, Angela Cohen, and all the staff for their complete cooperation and their assistance. As usual, it was a pleasure working with them, and they were very forthcoming with everything we needed. You have, in addition to the bound report, inside of that was a letter on our letterhead. It's a two-page letter with several attachments behind that. I would like to start with that. This is required communication. Anytime an organization of any type, either governmental or corporate, has an audit of financial statements done, these are bullet points that have to be discussed. The opening paragraph talks about this being an audit under governmental activities, and it refers to Exhibit 1 near the end of that first paragraph, which is attached. That's our engagement letter that spells out the terms of the engagement of the audit itself, of what our responsibilities are, what management's responsibilities are. After that, then, you see the heading Qualitative Aspects of Accounting Practices. We point out that management is responsible for the choosing and implementing appropriate accounting policies. We do point out that no new accounting policies were adopted this year. If there had been any, which those are issued typically by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, we would bring those to your attention for any new items that had to be dealt with. We also point out that accounting estimates are an integral part of the financial statement, and you'll see all those bullet points in the middle of the page. These are the most sensitive accounting estimates that are involved, and anytime you prepare financial statements, there is an element of estimation in those statements themselves, and you can see those significant items there. At the bottom of the page, difficulties encountered in performing the audit. If we had encountered any difficulties, we're required to bring that to your attention. Any difficulties dealing with management? Obviously, there were none. Top of the second page, then, corrected and uncorrected misstatements. To the extent there are relatively small items, not just totally trivial items, but relatively small items that don't require adjustment in the financial statements that come to light during the course of our audit, we bring those to your attention, and those are attached in Exhibit 2. There's no reason to really go through those. And then beyond that, in Exhibit 3, are the adjusting entries that we actually did request that management post to the books and records. That's a required communication because that gives you a sense, the number of adjusting entries that are required, give you a sense of the quality of accounting that's being performed. And obviously, there are very, very few items, nothing of major significance there, so that's a good indicator that the accounting staff is obviously doing a very good job. The next bullet point, disagreements with management. We're pleased to report that we, that no disagreements arose during the course of our audit. Management's representation. At the end of the audit, we always have a list of things that we have management represent back to us in the letters attached, and essentially, what that's telling us is that they've told us everything, that they've answered all of our questions, that they've given us the information we asked for, and they've not withheld any information. Other audit findings, or management's consultations with other independent accountants. If management had gone to another audit firm and asked for a second opinion or something like that, that firm is required to contact us as the primary auditors and let us know that management has approached them in that manner, and we receive no communications. We're not aware of any such consultations. Other audit findings or issues. We generally discuss a lot of accounting policies practices with Angela and the staff and management during the course of our audit, sometimes before the audit begins. And one of the things we have to represent to you is that none of those discussions were a criteria of us being, for us to be retained as auditors. So essentially, the idea is, they didn't say, "If you will let us account for it this way, then we'll let you do our audit." There was nothing like that. That is a required communication because, as you've seen in the corporate world in recent years, some things have happened. The last item there, we did note some deficiencies in internal control, and that will be the last thing we talked about, talk about. It's in the actual financial statements themselves. And so we might as well go to that. That's the rather large book, and as Mayor Dean said, it's a comprehensive annual financial report. We, in the accounting profession, call it the CAFR. That's what governmental, the various governments refer to this as. We've talked about this in previous years.
What page do, what page are you going to?
All right, let's go to, at the very beginning, after the table of contents, you'll see Roman numeral I. And this is actually a letter to the citizens of the city of Longview on the city's letterhead. It's near the front, Roman numeral I. This is the letter of transmittal prepared by Mrs. Cohen, pages 1 through 6. And this describes the CAFR, describes what the financial statements are, and also has some narrative comments about what happened in the finances of the city during the year, and some of the, there's a few items looking forward into the future. I'll also mention, and we'll see it in just a moment, after those pages, pages 1 through 6, in pages 3 through 13, there's another letter from Mrs. Cohen called Management's Discussion and Analysis. And it's a twin document of this, and in some cases, there will appear to be overlap, but it goes into quite a bit more detail about the individual financial statements. And it takes this large book and breaks it down into about 10 pages of common language, a few graphs, a few major financial points to point out. If you, and obviously, a lot of this is reference material if it's ever needed, and it's reference material for the various agencies, federal agencies, and others that grant funds to you. Beyond that, that transmittal letter and management discussion and analysis, if you can read those when you have time, it will give you a good background on what's in the report, what's in the financial statements. Obviously, we're belaboring numbers that are September 30, 2012 fiscal year numbers, so it's not anything that's new to you, but it brings it into a comprehensive summary format that's very helpful. After those initial pages, then, pages Roman numeral 1 through 6, you'll see a few individual items, and then there's a financial section after the Roman numeral pages. And the first thing in there, then, is the independent auditor's report on our letterhead. Still near the front, but it's after the organization chart and a few things like that. And it's before the management discussion and analysis. So it's essentially page 1 of the actual report itself. This is our opinion on the financial statements. It is an unqualified opinion, which means the financial statements are free of any material misstatements, and that's what this is asserting. You'll see, as we go through this, we actually have three opinions, three reports that we're issuing. This report is on the financial statements themselves. After that, then, as I said, is the management discussion and analysis. And as I've mentioned in years past and just a moment ago, if you'll read that in conjunction with the transmittal letter, that'll give you a good background of the report. After that, then, on page 14, we actually get to the actual financial statements. I'm not going to belabor the numbers, but I do want to point out, as I have in the past, what the basic financial statements are. We have two sets of statements. We have, starting here, the statement of net assets is part of what is called the government-wide financial statements. That is taking the typical governmental fund statements that we've had historically for decades in governmental entities and converting those into a format that is more similar to what a corporate entity would have. You have long-term debt, you have the bonds payable, the liabilities for other employment benefit liabilities that you have on there, things that don't appear in the typical fund financial statements. And this gives you a measure, especially for those that are accustomed to working in the corporate world, a measure of seeing where the city is. And you can compare these from year to year and see what net assets has done, and that will give you an indication of the health of the city itself. If you look at page 15 and 16, that's a statement of activities. That is the equivalent, again, then, in the corporate world of an income statement. And if you look at, it's a busy two pages, but if you look at page 16, near the bottom right section, the title is over on page 15, change in net assets. That would be, in the corporate world, that's your net income. You'll see, then, that the total, under the total column, the change in net assets is a positive $2.7 million. So that gives you an indication that the net assets of the city, while you had significant expenditures for certain things going on, paying down of debt and everything else, at the same time, there's still a positive trend there. So continued health in the finances of the city, continued improvement there when the city was already in a fairly positive position. After that, then, on page 17 and 18, the balance sheet under the old method of the typical governmental funds, takes all the major funds here, the governmental funds, and shows you the status of those at the end of September. Page 19 and 20, then, is the statement of revenue and expenditures under the governmental fund format. And you'll see on page 20, or I'm sorry, on page 19, the general fund is where everybody typically focuses, and you'll see the net change in fund balances was a decrease of about $1.9 million. And you contrast that with, well, the government wide said we went up $2.7 million. The reason for that are, you had a couple of very major expenditures that are capital assets from a corporate perspective that are expenditures here. You spent between the George Ritchie expansion and the rodeo arena, about $3, $3.5 million. In the vast majority of that, obviously, was in the George Ritchie expansion. So while you spent that money out of the general fund of three, maybe $3.5 million, the general fund balance only went down $1.9 million. So due to cost, the city staff had anticipated that fiscal 2012 might be a little bit more difficult year, and it budgeted accordingly. And then the sales tax revenue came in as good or better than expected, so that actually, then, you had a net increase that offset a significant portion of those expenditures. After those governmental funds, then, there are, and those continue on for a couple of pages, pages 24 through 35, and I won't go through those, are the funds for, we call them enterprise funds or business-type funds. Those would be water utilities, solid waste disposal, Longview Recreational Association, those type of funds. So there are a number of pages there that show the activity in those funds throughout the year. And again, that's more for reference material, if you have any questions about those later. And then near the end of that, right after that, page 36 and 37, is the fiduciary fund for your pension trust fund. And you can see that there. After that, then, are the notes to the financial statement, beginning on page 38, and that continues all the way to page 73. And the only thing I would say there is to point out, as you go through the financial statements, if you have a question about a specific line item, the notes will often tell you how something is accounted for, what a balance is comprised of. So that's, again, reference material if you need that. After the notes, then, there's required supplementary information and some other non-audited supplementary information, and this is really the reference material for the various users of the financial statement, the various people that will ask you for these financial statements. They will look at those. That's not something for us to spend time on tonight. That will take us all the way back near the end of the report to page 130, which is the part of the report that everybody's always the most interested in. That's the most often significant part beyond opining on the financial statements themselves, is are we in compliance with the things that we need to be in compliance with? So on page, starting on page 30, you'll see...
30 or 130?
130. I'm sorry, 131 is where the governmental compliance section starts. There's a, 130 is the last supplemental schedule. Then you'll see a divider page called governmental compliance. The next page are two reports on our letterhead. And as I said early on, we issue three reports. The first that we talked about early was the report on the financial statement itself, our audit opinion on the status of the financial statements. This first letter on the left, as you're looking at these, is a report on compliance and controls over financial reporting. And this is, we have to look at the controls and the compliance with the various aspects under governmental accounting rules to see that the reporting is being accomplished in the appropriate manner. In the second section there, that's internal control over financial reporting, the very last sentence of that section says, "We did not identify any deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting that we consider to be material weaknesses as defined above." And what that tells you, then, is that the controls are working for the reporting, for the accumulation of data, for the accounting function, and the various other departments that feed into the accounting function to compile the information that's needed. So that is a clean opinion. That is an unqualified opinion as well. The opinion on the right page, then, which continues on to the next page, is the compliance aspect of that. It's, we're talking about whether you have complied with the requirements of the major programs. And this is typically, this is... And this is, this is typically, this is focusing on, on the grants at this point, the grants and those type of activities. In the compliance section, the next to the last paragraph refers to item 2012A, and that's the one finding that we do have this year. We do have one finding and we'll refer to that. It's at the very, near the very back of the report and we'll get to that in a moment. And other, other than that one item, you were in compliance with, with all of, all of the major programs that we tested. So there, there were no issues other than that one. And that one, that one causes us a little problem, but we'll talk about that more in a moment. If you go to the next page then, beyond compliance, we talk about internal control. And we, and obviously we don't audit internal control, but it's, it's part of the procedures that we perform. We do an analysis of internal control. And to the extent we're auditing the major programs, we're looking at the controls around those programs. In relation to that same finding that I mentioned on compliance, there, we, we have a deficiency that we, that we report here as a material weakness in, internal control. And again, that's, that's in the finding that we'll talk about in just a moment. After that then, the next two pages list the federal awards that you received during the year and the dollars, dollar amounts of those. Go over to page one-thirty-seven then, and that's where we'll, we'll begin to talk about the finding that we did have this year. So schedule of finding, findings and question cost. There was, we had one, one item that, that was identified as a material weakness as, as we note there on page one-thirty-seven, which resulted in this being a qualified opinion, which means we didn't throw, we didn't throw the baby out with the bathwater. We, it, it's more of a, the, we have, we generally have a clean opinion on, on this aspect of compliance and on internal controls other than the one item. But because of the one item, it rose to the level that was considered a material weakness and qual, qualified the opinion. On page, page one-thirty-eight then, I will talk about that finding. And it was in, it was in the transit department. And it was related to the, the grant, the federal transit cluster. And you'll see in the condition, it says, "Certain items of cost charged to the federal grant were not properly approved as such items of cost were noted to be disallowable." Sounds innocuous enough on the surface, but, but the, the, the part of the grant's process is that all expenditures have to be approved as part of the process before, before they're expended. And, and we, and there were some issues there. I will, we'll see that a little bit more on the next page. The, the effect there, we talked about that, is that, that it's a material weakness in internal control related to the activities allowed and allowable cost. Because the, because the costs were not pre-approved as, as they should have been, they, that results in, in that those costs could be either partially disallowed or entire, potentially entirely disallowed. Go to the next page, page one-thirty-nine and look at the context and you, and this will, this will help a little bit. We, we discussed there that during the course of the audit, there was, we noted that there was a lack of review and approval by the general manager of Longview Transit Management, Inc., which is obviously who you contract with for the, for this service. It's noted during the course of the audit that two instances of payroll transactions were charged to incorrect, the incorrect function. And then further down, finally, certain travel costs were noted that did not conform to the requirements related to that specific item of cost as defined, defined by the circular. Travel costs are required to be substantiated by either the appropriate per diem for the location of travel or by actual cost. So, so the, so we, we have a couple of issues going on there with, with the, the approval of the cost and with the nature of the cost. We, we have a recommendation there that the management of Longview Management, Longview Transit Management, Inc., review their processes and internal control to, to determine what needs to be done. And you can see management's response there. We've reviewed what their response is, how they intend to address this, and we believe that, that their response should bring this area into compliance. Should not be an, should not be an issue. Again, relatively small dollar amounts and, and items that seem to be innocuous enough. But the problem is, unlike the financial statements where we're talking, I don't, the, the financial statements are materially correct, the compliance tends to be a little more black and white, very, very narrow definitions that you have to comply with.
Excuse me, can I, can we ask some questions?
Sure, sure.
Okay. So on roughly a hundred and fifty million dollar budget, plus or minus, so your deficiency is in reference to approximately $300,000. And I'm talking about that's the amount, but not necessarily the total deficiency. But it was in regards to your, your transit cluster and what, what else was?
Well, that's not even, that's not even the error. That's just the threshold to be considered a major program to be tested.
I guess my point is, is that we're talking about on that size budget, that the 300,000, it's not really that amount of money. We're talking about less than two-tenths of a percent of our total budget. We might have had a deficiency. Is that correct?
I, I would say the deficiency is much, much smaller than that.
Great. So, great job, staff. That's what I'm trying to get to.
Right, right. Yeah.
Okay, continue, please.
And that's where, that's where our hands are tied. You know, this is, this is very much a very regimented area when we, when we get into compliance.
Right.
In the grand scheme of things, I agree wholeheartedly with you. Which brings us to the next page, page one-forty. And, and that is good news because when we have findings, we have to address those in the subsequent audits. And if you remember, we had a lot of things to talk about last year. We had a lot more than the one, the one thing we had this year. We had four different items and some of those caused some heartburn in, in various places. Two, two of those are, are mentioned here. They, they, they have to be and there's various reasons, but there were four items last year. If you remember, there were some problems in the EMS billing department. The second one was, we, we had some items that had not been capitalized, that should have been capitalized in construction costs. They'd left off the, the month of September 2011 inadvertently. And then the two items mentioned here, the housing department, which we, we spoke about at length last year. And, and that, that is actually mentioned here because management had a response at that time that we, that we felt would be appropriate. They've actually revised the response and we've reviewed this and, and discussed the procedures with them. And we, and we feel this, their, their, once they got in there and started doing the work, their initial response of how they would address that, it, they, they determined there were better ways to do that. So that's why we have to issue this revised response to, to what they did last year. And then the fourth one, if you remember, there was, you have to have documentation related to the Davis Bacon Act. Again, that was one of those things that's just a piece of paper you had to have and it, it wasn't in the appropriate place at the time. All four of these items have been rectified. Every, they, they did an outstanding job, especially in relation to, to the housing department and those things where there was a significantly more amount of work. You know, the Davis Bacon, that was easy enough to dress with, you just need a piece of paper. Some of the others, there was quite a bit more effort that, that had to be undertaken. And, and they did address all of those issues that we, that we saw last year. So again, they should be commended for that as well. They, they did an outstanding job in addressing the items that we brought to your attention last year. So that is all I have unless anyone has any questions.
Questions, comments? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all coming. Good job. And good job to Ms. Cohen and her staff.
Absolutely.
Golly, computer died. Consider agenda. Council, is any item on the consider agenda you'd like to consider separately?
Just a comment.
Excuse me?
Just a comment.
You want to comment now, you want to comment?
Now.
No, on the appointments for the different committees here, there was an article in the paper today, which was very, very, very well-written. And just also wanted to say thank you because looking through here, we've got a lot of new people and a lot of longtime citizens here in Longview and certainly feel good about those people step, stepping, oh, stepping forward and willing to take the responsibility and take these positions. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? And we want to thank our, our committee, Mr. Frost and Ms. Cash for doing outstanding job with reviewing the applicants and, and putting together a really good, good group of people, a lot of new people. So we appreciate y'all efforts. All right, have a motion?
Second.
Second, on favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Action item. Consider resolution authorize city manager or the city manager's designee to enter into development agreement with Lodging Host Hotel. Mr. Ewing?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is the next step in our pursuit of a hotel conference center. Council directed staff to begin negotiations last month. And this would be an initial agreement to start determining architectural designs and cost estimates. Before we lead into a master development agreement, we want to know what the cost is, what the roles are going to be of each party. So this will be the, the next step. And there is some cost in that, of course, for both parties. They will share in the, the lodging hosts will share in the cost of this. So this will be only funding the, the portion of the conference center, the public portion, if you will. The, we do have re, tax increment reinvestment zone funds available for this. And so we're recommending that those funds be dedicated towards this, this next step in this agreement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Okay, let me, just one thing. I know there's been some discussions with the, the Longview Chamber, et cetera, about the size or number of rooms, et cetera. And, and I think it's very important, you know, for us to understand that what this process does, it puts us through a due diligence process. And I don't think anybody has shut the doors on how big the hotel is going to be, whether it's 150 rooms, whether it's 200 rooms. That's, some of that information is going to come through this study. Correct?
We are. It does include a, an additional update to a market study that we accomplished last year. So we'd like to update that for this location and that will be looked at as well.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody knew that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, may I have a motion? Have a motion? Second, on favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Items of community interest. Mr. Sims?
Thank you.
You thought I was going to call you Romeo, I know.
You got it in anyway, didn't you? That's, that's too old. Oh, Mayor, this afternoon, I went to a funeral for Eddie Bowers. Several years ago, the city of Longview was having problems with, excuse me, drugs, holdups, beatings, and one murder of a gentleman in his own driveway. Eddie Bowers and Bill Beckham took it upon themselves to start what was Citizens on Patrol. Chief Dangler sent some representatives to the funeral and comment was made about what, what these two fine gentlemen did for this city. I want to let you know that at some time in the future, I will be asking the council to do something to honor these two men. I know several years ago, we, we did give them a commendation, but I think it should be more than that because if they had not started this when they did, we may have had some additional problems. So with that, I'll pass to Gary.
Okay, Mrs. Smith.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Sims.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Cash, we got, let's see, school zone signs.
Yes.
At M.O.K. and Burke Sun now. I hope we got them on the east and west side. I saw them on the east side.
We have them on both, I think.
On both, okay, all right. Because that was a problem of one of our citizens in this city. Second, we got a women's handgun class and scheduled for April. Call the police department, Miss Hill?
Yes.
Okay, for, to register?
Yes, sir.
Okay, to register. Okay. And the Green Street underpass to be finished and completed in June of this year. Thank goodness for that.
Is that correct, Mr. Bonds? Good job, Gary.
We need that.
Put him, put him on the spot, Gary.
That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cash, Ms. Cash.
Ms. Cash, or Mr.?
Ms. Cash.
I'm all choked up. It's been a great day. Um, you know, I want to thank everyone in, in District Three and in the community and city staff that came out to celebrate the opening of the new trail, walking trail at the Benny Jackson Park in my district. I, I always have to acknowledge a few of my constituents, Brother Gee Floyd, Brandon, and Ms. Madeline Scott. You know, Temple Terrace Crime Watch started that many, many moons ago, way before my time. I remember when Mrs. Willis had it placed on the park's master plan. And we haven't been able to find the money. Well, this year, council, we were able to find the money. So it's happened and I'm excited. And, and today, if you weren't there, you really missed a great turnout. And I want to publicly thank Councilman Gary Smith and Councilman Richard Manley for coming out and support because it was just, and our city manager, David Willard, who's always right at home in District Three, for coming out today and just say thanks to all. Want to also let you know that we have been in, the I-20 task force is moving very well. Again, I always say thank you to the mayor for allowing us to proceed in this process. And just want to thank the citizens who are participating. It seems like it's going quicker than you would normally anticipate and there's a lot to learn. But we've got to put some things together and move forward. And that's what we're beginning to do. So thanks to staff for helping us in that process. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Cash. Mr. Frost?
Mr. Manley? Yes, sir. I have two things I'd like to say, or two assets I'd like to recognize in our city. One is Bill Stout. Once again, Judge Stout's being recognized for his efforts, working regionally. I think it's Ed Cog, East Texas Council of Governments, giving him something kind of like the road, road hand warrior deal he got a couple of years ago from Tech dot. But again, recognizing the paper last week for his, his hard-working efforts. We're lucky to have, like we are lucky to have someone with, like Mayor Dean's stature to lead our city. We got someone like Bill Stout to lead our county. And I think he and the county commissioners are doing a super job, so I want to recognize them. The other one is Good Shepherd. A lot of us came out in the cold and forty-degree temperatures and blowing winds last week to see them dedicate that facility on the north side of town. And those of us who live on the north side of town are happy to see something like that, 75,000 square foot facility with emergent care, outpatient mammograms, x-rays, that next time a little, a kid gets hurt in a football game at Spring Hill, we'll have to drive all the way downtown, we can just run right down the street. And of course, they're looking to go to not only take care of northern Longview, but also to, to go after and grow north into North Gregg County and, and north of there. So again, I want to recognize two fabulous assets of our city, Bill Stout and Good Shepherd Hospital.
Good job. Okay. Mr. Sidney Allen?
Thank you, sir. First, I would like to apologize for missing the city council meeting two weeks back. We had the opportunity to go with our daughter, her husband, and our three grandchildren on a trip over spring break. And it's just wonderful time spent with your family. It is. I just want to say that was just something we couldn't pass up. Now, I'd like to weigh in on an issue that was in front of the Commissioners Court, Gregg County Commissioners Court, at their last meeting, have to do with money that they're transferring over to the city of Longview to help with our repaving program. You know, repaving a street is a lot like painting a picture. You can have a wonderful canvas and you can have all the paint you need, but you can still end up with one big mess, repaving a street. The company that we're talking about coming in here is Cutler Paving Company. They're out of Kansas and this is a world-class organization. They engineered, built, and patented the machine that they use in this repaving operation. And this is just not a little piece of equipment. This actual piece of equipment is eighty foot, not eight, eight zero. This piece of equipment is eighty foot long. It heats the asphalt, it removes it, it blends it, and it re, re-applies the asphalt on the streets. Now, if we'd like to go in the business, this machine sells for one million dollars. Or is it two?
Two million.
Two million. Wow.
You'd be the only one that could go in that business, Sidney.
I'll bow out of that.
Keep on going, Sidney.
These people that, that built this machine and run it are the best there is in the country at repairing an asphalt street. I would like to propose, if Mr. Bonds... I would like to propose, if Mr. Bonds would call Commissioner Primo and myself this summer to watch this operation, I am sure Commissioner Primo would feel we are certainly getting the best value for the money spent. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I forgot something. We lost a very important member in my district this year, very important in this community. Mr. Clifford Stewart passed away. His services will be held Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at what we affectionately call Big Bethel Baptist Church here in Longview. So please continue to pray for his family. He, he really did a lot in our community, and he was married to my late great aunt, Ruth Garrett Stewart. So please continue to pray for the family during this time, and we shall remember him dearly. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Frost.
All right, here we go. Need to congratulate White Oak for the basketball championship.
Yeah, yes.
Third, third in a row, I believe it is?
Two in a row. They've gone three.
Two in a row? Okay, all right.
They took control.
They took control of it, so they, we congratulate them. They're one of our-
Sure do.
Some of our citizens, too.
Good job, Roughnecks. Okay, city of Longview offices closed tomorrow, March 29th, a good Friday. Next, District Two Town Hall Meeting, April 2nd, 2013, Mr. Gary Williams. Long, Gary Smith, Gary Williams. Anyway, it's going to be at Longview Christian Fellowship, 2101 West Marshall. Okay? 7:00 p.m. Be there, be ready.
Be ready.
Okay. City of Longview will host a career fair from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, April 10th, 2013, at the Maud Cobb Convention Activity Center, 100 Grand Boulevard. City of Longview and Keep Longview Beautiful will host the Spring Trash Bash on Saturday, April 13th, from 9:00 a.m. till noon at the Longview Public Library. Volunteers are invited to help clean a neighborhood or park of their choice. Also, tire and electronic recycling will be offered during that time. Industrial equipment, TVs and tires, and tires on rims will not be accepted. Who's going to get rid of their rims? They aren't going to be pretty, the rims on Gary's, though.
CMA.
Oh, yeah, here we go. Little moneybags over here. More information available, longview.gov. Okay, I want to bring up a, a couple of things. One, I appreciate, you know, reminders about Mr. Eddie Bowers. He was a great, he and his wife both were great community advocates. They were very, very passionate about Citizens on Patrol.
Right.
And was, was very sorry to read about his passing, and we, we pray for, for Mr. Bowers. Pardon me?
Yeah, for his whack Jenny.
Well, Ms. Jenny as well, but, you know, we hope he's in a better place. I want to talk about something, counsel, that's really disturbing that's going on in our community, especially with our youth. It's called K2. K2 is killing our kids, guys. We outlawed K2 several years ago in this council from the city of Longview. Well, they just sort of moved right outside the city limits. I've had discussions with Judge Stout regarding Gregg County, you know, putting in an ordinance to ban K2. But, but the problem, the problem is, is that only thing these, these people do is they reformulate the, the stuff. If anybody knows what K2 is, it's a type of incense. It's, it's the base product. If you remember, at the time, Chief McHale brought us a bag of the stuff, and, and the, the drug in it is sort of a derivative of cannabis, which is what's in marijuana. And then they add different chemicals to it to, I mean, the stuff's crazy, okay? And so we, we banned it. We're hoping that the other counties will ban it, but I, I want to call on the community, you know, to call your state representative and your state senators. You know, this should be something that the whole state bans, okay? And we ought to not stop there. It should go to the federal government. This stuff's coming in from China and some other areas. And I've had mothers come to my house and sit on my porch and cry for their kids. It's very addictive. It's, it's, it's like another crack cocaine deal, okay? It's that bad. These kids are smoking it, they're taking old cigars, dumping the tobacco out, filling it up with K2. And I'm serious, I'm getting a call every week about it, and, and it's, it, I tell you, it's, it's not segregated as to where it's used. It's used everywhere, okay? And, and the effects of this drug on our children is unbelievable, and it's, and it's, and it's taken the lives of our kids, if not physically, mentally, okay? So I ask the community, you know, please, you know, reach out, talk to your state representatives, talk to your state senators, talk to your federal representatives. Let's get this stuff out of these, these head shops and, and get them out of here. It's, it's, it's killing our youth, okay? I-20 corridor, I appreciate Cash, your work on that, along with Brandon and everybody else. And by the way, it was Brandon's idea about the I-20 corridor task force. But, yeah, that's, that's going to move quickly in between the Hotel Motel Convention Center and, you know, what happens to some of the, the old properties up and around that area, things are coming together. And I'm excited to see the results of this soon. At this time, council's going to retire to, or adjourn to executive session. I guess Ms., you want me to read all that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You don't read it for me? I thought we were buddies, man. Okay, we're going to move to executive session, personnel matters under Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, to consider, discuss, deliberate performance evaluations for the city attorney and the city manager. Okay? So we will adjourn to executive session. We will not be coming back out. Thank you. Nice hat, Richard.